We'll call our meeting to order. It's January 19th, 2021. And welcome to my first official council meeting as your mayor. Can I please have a roll call? Oh, wait, is that first? Yes, invocation, sorry, invocation. Oh, sorry, thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will now move to our invocation by Pastor Thor Strandhold from the Valor Christian Church. I see you there, Pastor Thor. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Well, good evening. Happy New Year. I haven't seen you all since last year. Mayor Peterson, you look good in that chair. Hallelujah.
Thank you, Pastor.
Vice Mayor Anderson, nice to see you again, and to the rest of the council. It's nice to be here. How many are like me? Sometimes you gotta write stuff down so you don't forget. Anybody here like that? Yes, okay. Well, I've discovered a new thing. I've discovered that you have to write it down when you get older. I've discovered that you have to write it down before you forget it. So, the quicker you write it down when you get older, the better you are. So, I did write a couple of things down here that I want to mention for this evening, and that is this: I am excited, number one, for being here. I'm excited about our new year. I am looking forward to what God has in store for us. Now, I look at everything from a biblical standpoint, and so we have new mountains to climb, we have rivers to cross, we have victories to win, and it's not time to dwell on the past. How many know you can't move forward looking in the rearview mirror? Kinda hard to do that, isn't it? Although I see some ladies driving down the road, looking in the rearview mirror, putting on their makeup, drinking their coffee, even some of them used to be on their phones. I don't know if they are now or not, but that's quite an accomplishment. "It's not time to dwell upon the past." As a matter of fact, in the Word of God, in Isaiah, Chapter 43, verses 18 to 19, it says, "Remember you not the former things, nor the things of old. The Lord says, 'Behold, I'm going to do a new thing in your life now. Shall you not know it? I will make a way in the wilderness and rivers in the desert.'" How appropriate that is for us. So, we're all gonna move on, we're gonna press on, we're gonna move upward, we're gonna press towards the mark that God has called us to accomplish. So, take a deep breath, relax, and here we go. Let's pray. Father, thank you for this team of leaders that we have here tonight in our town council. Thank you for your love, for your mercy, for your grace. Thank you that you give our council wisdom in making all the decisions that concern our great city here in Gilbert. Lord, we honor you, we give you the praise, we give you the glory, and it's in Jesus' name I pray, amen and amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. It's nice to see you this year. Thanks for joining us in person. Next, we have presentations and proclamations, and if I could have Chief Solberg join me down front, please. We're here to have a proclamation for Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life Month, whereas the Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life movement presents an ideal opportunity to help bridge the gap between young people and our local community, government, and law enforcement in a positive way, and whereas our local schools are facing presentable, excuse me, preventable suicides and tragedies that may include warning signs in person or online, but bystanders or friends remain silent among threats or cries for help, and whereas our young people can be empowered to report concerning posts or comments to school representatives or law enforcement, and adults can receive training to help spread the message it is okay to care enough to speak up, stand up, and save a life. Whereas more than 4,500 Arizona students from 157 public charter private and tribal schools have learned the message and created student-led impact projects in their schools and communities that have impacted over 400,000 youth in the state of Arizona, now therefore I, Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2021 as Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life Month. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Arizona school students, parents, educators, police departments, and community organizations are encouraged to coordinate a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer and promote a healthy environment for all children and adolescents. And I asked you to join me this evening because the event was held today virtually, and from what I understand, two of our police officers were recognized during that event, and I'd like you to mention that, please.
Thank you. Yeah, each year, I think this is the fifth year, if I remember correctly, that we've participated in the event, and unfortunately, we had to do it virtually this year, but two of our SROs are officers. Our SROs are so instrumental in mentoring and helping our youth in all of our schools. And Officer Dietz and Officer Salazar were recognized today and received an award from this committee for their hard work that they do each and every day within the school. So, I want to congratulate them, Sergeant Borum, and all of our SROs that keep our schools safe each and every day. They were participating, and we unfortunately couldn't be there in person, but we're glad to proclaim this month as a Stand Up, Speak Up, and Save a Life. Obviously, especially with COVID going on, we want to make sure that everyone knows their resources and reach out for help when needed. Thank you.
This portion of the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government that are not on the printed agenda. We did not receive any comments this evening. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Councilmember Yentes, do you have any items to pull for discussion on the consent calendar?
5A, please.
What number was that? Number eight?
5A.
5A. All right, we'll exclude number 5A for discussion. May we have a motion to approve items 1, 1B, 2 through 5, 5B, 5C, 6, 6A, 7, and item number 11, which is a motion to appoint Darren Roeburg for Quadrant 1, Steve Mastin for Quadrant 6, and Jeff Hamilton for Quadrant 9 to the Citizens Transportation Task Force with terms beginning January 19th, 2021, and ending after advising is completed on the assigned transportation projects and issues if no other tasks are assigned by the council.
Move approval. Second.
Please vote.
Yes.
That motion passes 7-0. Councilmember Yentes, we'll discuss item 5A.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to take an opportunity to explain this issue a little bit more. I know this is typically something that, you know, I pull off the agenda and be opposed to, but there is an exception on this. This was, there was a little bit of a misunderstanding on this item previously, but these particular CDBG funds were already accepted by the town of Gilbert, and this is just a matter of, you know, doing a substantial amendment to kind of reallocate them so that they can kind of get their maximum, highest, and best use. So, because of the work of the subcommittee did on, you know, the CARES Act funding with specific, you know, allocations, generous allocations to the business community through our grant programs, because these were previously designated for kind of economic development purposes, this is really just allowing money that the town has already accepted to be used in a different way since, like I said, we've kind of met those needs through the CARES Act Subcommittee. So, with that, I'll support this item.
Thank you, Councilmember Yentes. Are there any other comments from councilmembers? Maybe you have a motion to approve item 5A?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Please vote.
Yes.
That's approved, 7-0. That concludes the consent agenda. Mayor Peterson. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Being in true form of my first night and trying to do the roll call first, I totally neglected the roll call before presentations and proclamations, so could we please do the roll call now? Town clerk?
Mayor Bridget Peterson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jan Kaprowski?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks?
Present.
Councilmember Scott September?
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke?
Here.
And Councilmember Amy Yentes?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. Now, we'll move into the public hearing portion of our agenda. We have a couple of items, three, on our agenda, but one would like to be discussed. Would anyone like to discuss items 8 and 9, or do we have any requests to speak on Seeing no requests to speak on items 8 and 9, we could go ahead and move those, or we can just wait and discuss number 10 and do them all at one time, I believe. Is that correct, counselor? Thank you. Opening the public hearing. Any comments or questions on items 8 and 9? No? Seeing none? Would anyone like to make a motion? Oh, thank you. Close the public hearing. There are no notes up here on how to do that, that I can find. Close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion on items 8 and 9?
Mayor, I move to approve.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember September and a second from Vice Mayor Kaprowski. I'll, please vote.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Now, on to item number 10, Code of Gilbert, and I believe that Councilmember Hendricks asked for that. Would you like staff to make a presentation, or do you just have some questions? Councilmember?
I'd just like to make some comments, and perhaps staff will respond, or not.
Can you pull your mic a little closer, please? Sorry. Thank you.
I said, I'd just like to make some comments, and I've spoken with staff before. They may or may not choose to respond to my comments, but I'd like to just start with some comments. In reading through this, I called the staff because it's a pretty heavy read, reading the change we're making here, and so I'd ask, what's the goal? What are we doing here? I suspect what's really behind this is I think we're trying to find some way to subvert the recent proposition that we just passed, allowing marijuana plants to be grown by individuals. And if that's what we're doing, and that's the explanation, I don't know I have a problem with that, but I guess, as I'm trying to understand what we're doing and the explanation I'm getting, my understanding is we're changing the building code to place special requirements if you're going to cultivate marijuana plants or extract oils from them. And so, we're changing the building code to take precautions for ventilation, I guess, potential explosions if you have too much chemical or whatever stored in a residential facility or an outbuilding. And so, one of my questions is, how's this gonna come to play? The proposition that was passed, whether we support it or don't support it, it allows the cultivation and extraction of certain quantities. I don't see anybody coming into the town and saying, "I need a permit so I can go put up a building behind my home so I can grow marijuana plants and extract oil from them." And the explanation I was given is they largely agreed that that's probably not gonna happen. So, another question is, how are we gonna enforce it? If somebody's not gonna apply for a permit, they're not gonna tell us they're doing this, how do we enforce it? And there really isn't any way to enforce it either. The enforcement answer I was given is, if law enforcement or some sort of a complaint from the community says there's a smell coming from this home, or maybe law enforcement shows up and they see a 55-gallon drum of some chemical in the back room, then our form of enforcement would be secondary after we are there for another reason. And I think we've got to be sensitive. Why would law enforcement be there for the primary cause? It could be domestic violence, it could be theft, it could be emergency services of some sort. If you had any one of those that you may call for police support, is the person in this home that needs home, are they gonna be reluctant to call because they're gonna say, "Well, we've got six marijuana plants we're growing legally, but we don't have the right ventilation," or "We don't have the right explosion-proof light," or whatever else is being required here? Are we gonna discourage those people from using these services? If they are, I've got a challenge with that. And in addition, if somebody does have, let's say, an explosive product or a chemical that they're storing for the purpose of, I don't know anything about this process, but whatever it is they do, I guess there's explosive chemicals involved. There's laws already on the books. You can't produce dynamite in your house now. I don't know what we're gaining here, and it's perhaps I don't have enough information from the conversations that I've had about it. Maybe if I learn more, I'll feel different about it, but right now, I don't know how we're gonna enforce it. I don't know who would apply for it. If it's just a visual that we want to show, a protest that we don't support, whatever it was, Prop 207 or whatever it was, there's nothing improper about just saying, "We want to make a statement. We don't like the proposition that passed," and just say it what it is. So, I guess, as it stands, without more information to help me understand how we would enforce it, why anybody would use it, how in the world the building code would ever come into play, I don't see the benefit of having this on the books. So, I guess I'd like to either table it till we get more information, or I'll have to vote no.
Town Attorney Payne, would you like to tackle this? Or do we have staff on the line that would like to maybe address this issue?
Mayor Peterson, I'm happy to answer some of the legal questions, but Larry Taylor, I believe, is available to answer some of the questions as he brought forth this matter.
Thank you. Could we have Larry join us, Judy? Please, thank you.
Hi, this is Larry. Can you hear me?
Very faintly, Larry.
Okay, is that any better?
No, not really. You're kind of breaking up, and you're very faint.
Okay, I'm not sure how to improve on that. Is this any better?
No, I'm sorry, Larry, it's not, unfortunately. Sounds like you have a bad connection.
Mayor, we also have Tim Simonton on the call as well, who could answer questions.
That'd be great. Judy, can we switch over, please?
Hi, Tim, you are unmuted if you're ready. Thank you.
This is Tim Simonton. Are you able to hear me?
Pretty good. Yes, Tim, thank you.
Council, Mayor Peterson, councilmembers. The purpose behind, I think, the, these amendments were to reinforce the code and be able to have something that indicates that, you know, these kind of processes really aren't necessary, or, let's say, in the residential situation. And if they were, that, you know, we were able to assist people in making sure that they have a safe operation. The residential code pretty much covers the residential portion of the residential construction, and there really are no provisions in that code for hazardous materials and industrial operations. Extraction and growing are more industrial operations for commercial-type occupancies and locations. If they were going to put them in a residential situation, we want to make sure that we have something in place to either assist people in what they're doing, or let them know that, you know, what they want to do really isn't the residential location, is really not the place for that.
This is Councilman Hendricks. So, if you say you're making, we're making ourselves available to help them, make them safe, do we think people who are operating legally under the proposition the state passed, we think they're gonna call the town and say, "Hey, I've decided to take advantage of this. Could you come out and check out my house and tell me what, how much money should I spend to upgrade it so that I, I don't understand?" What would make us think anybody's going to call?
Mayor Peterson, Councilmember Hendricks, the, you know, we can always hope that somebody will call, but, I mean, we don't have that, you know, really ability to make everybody call. However, we can, you know, put the provisions in place for those that do call, and if they don't, and they're in violation, if we get a complaint from, you know, to code compliance related to smells or odors or, you know, something going on, a 55-gallon drum sitting in the backyard that's using stuff, we have provisions to help mitigate that situation as well.
I believe state law prohibits the storage of dangerous chemicals and fumes and all these sorts of things already, so I believe this would be duplicitive to laws that are already on the books, and I think it sounds like you agree with me, no one's gonna call for a permit, I guess, if someone was real concerned, but I really find that unlikely. And frankly, I want to be clear, I didn't support this proposition. But at the same time, whether I support it or not, it is state law, and it did pass, and that is the law. If the, if the goal here is to come up with some way to give people liability for doing something that is legal, but we'd rather they don't do it, I guess we can just say that. Maybe that is what we're saying, and that's what we're voting on. If it is, that's fine, but I think it's obvious, nobody's gonna call to say, "Hey, I've been waiting the last 10 years so I could grow marijuana in my back bathroom, and now I want to call and see if you can come out and tell me what kind of upgrades I should make before I do it." I mean, if that's what you want me to think, fine, but, I mean, give me a break. That's not gonna happen. And as far as somebody storing noxious chemicals in their home, there are statutes to prevent that right now. The idea of somebody going into a home and secondarily looking for these things, there's some minimum level of property rights that we all enjoy and we want to retain. I'd say, I don't support anything about this proposition, but I don't want anybody coming to my house and looking around to see if I've got the right can of deodorant in my bathroom, and I don't see, this is a big step from that.
Any councilmembers have any other comments or questions on this item?
Mayor, if I might ask Chris Payne to maybe kind of, if he could speak to Prop 207 as to specifically what's in the initiative that allows the local municipalities to kind of regulate this area, I think that might be helpful.
Thank you, Councilmember Yentes.
Mayor Peterson, Councilmember Yentes, Prop 207, and I don't have a copy right in front of me at this time, but, but obviously, the purpose was to allow the sale and use of recreational marijuana, which includes the ability to grow, I believe it's up to six household plants in the residential area. The statute, or the, the initiative is passed, is passed by the voters, was very specific in areas in which municipalities and counties had no authority to regulate, and in other areas, it deferred to the local municipalities. This is one where a municipality has the ability to regulate, as was the areas that council considered and passed in October, dealing with prohibiting the use of marijuana on public property and those type of things. So, this is one where the initiative does not prohibit this type of regulation.
Thank you, Chris. If I, if I might, Mayor, I'll just say, I'm sympathetic to some of the concerns that Councilman Hendricks has raised about property rights and potential unenforceability, but I do think, as, as the initiative, as was passed, you know, is, that becomes more of a reality in our communities and in our neighborhoods and in our town, that any area open to us as a community to regulate it, even if, you know, laws on the books, regulations on the books, aren't usually on the books for the good actors, they're on there, so you have, you know, ways in which to, you know, bring bad actors into compliance. And so, I would say, as any area that the proposition legally left open communities to regulate this activity, I think is, is something we ought to take full advantage of. You know, I'm sympathetic to those arguments, but because I do think that 207 is going to be very bad for the town of Gilbert and the other municipalities, I think we might as well, you know, take advantage of our authority to regulate it as much as possible. That's my position.
Thank you, Councilmember Yentes. I agree with you, Councilmember Yentes. I think that this is a spot where, as Tim was trying to explain, that if we do get a call from a neighbor and they have a complaint, then we have something in the town code to fall back on in order to enforce that. If we don't have anything in the town code, then we won't have anything in the, for them to be able to enforce when it comes down to them being able to, or needing that opportunity. And I agree with what Councilmember Yentes said about it is a personal issue, and it could be construed that way, but I don't think that it's meant to be that way. I also do believe that there will be companies that will be helping residents set up their plants in their homes to be able to grow, and I think those companies will be looking at the guidelines that have been set forth in the municipalities, and I'd rather be ahead of that game than behind that game. So, I would be all for passing this this evening. Does anyone else have any comments or questions on this item?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Anderson.
Just a quick comment. I don't view this any differently than many of the other codes that we have. Home-based businesses, for instance, the code's only as good as we can enforce, and it certainly isn't, isn't enforced unless there's a complaint of some kind, and it'll be the same with all of these. Virtually all of our codes are that way. It's by complaint, for the most part. I, too, feel very strongly about property rights, but I view property rights not only extending to the person's own personal property, but the people that are next to that property also enjoy property rights. And so, many of the codes, and granted, there are some that probably are redundant and we don't need, but the codes are intended to protect everybody's property rights. So, I'd be in favor of this tonight.
Thank you. By my, Councilmember Anderson, any other comments or questions? No? I would entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve.
Oh, second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember September, a second from Councilmember Yentes. Please vote.
Yes.
And the motion passes 6-1. Thank you very much. That concludes our items on our public hearing. I will close the public hearing. Our next item is, let me see, our boards, commissions, and subcommittees' updates. Does anyone have any liaison reports that they'd like to share, members of the council?
I have a Subcommittee report, Mayor, if this is the time you'd like me to go over that.
That would be perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so, we did have another meeting of the Subcommittee for the CARES Act monies last week, and our intention was to revisit kind of the business grant relief program, specifically as we concluded the first phase of that program. And I do think, from the Subcommittee's perspective, it's been very successful so far. As we wrapped up Phase 1, we had, you know, a total of 304 applicants. 234 of those have been approved for some award amount for the grants. We awarded just over $4 million, and, and then, as kind of our, one of our key performance indicators, we supported, you know, over 2,800 jobs through those grants, who mainly small businesses. So, from our perspective, it's doing the work that we had intended it to do, kind of following the closure of that. There, there was a survey that was sent to both participants, but also, you know, kind of a wider audience of, of the business community in Gilbert, and we got responses from that, and then, just based upon kind of the, you know, what we were able to glean out from the actual award.
you know, what we were able to glean out from the actual award, awardees, as well as the survey responses, both businesses who applied, didn't apply, were awarded, potentially were declined for whatever reason. We were able to kind of glean some good information as far as what we might be able to do to tweak the program to move forward. So the subcommittee did coalesce around a few modifications, specifically around the grant qualifications. So when we open it back up for kind of Phase Two of the grant program, we might be able to kind of respond to some of the feedback that we heard from the business community, specifically if some businesses were not, were declined for an award, or maybe didn't qualify for, for, you know, as much money as they, as they thought that they might should, and then just, you know, really weren't helped with the program like, like we had expected them to. So some of those modifications that the subcommittee agreed upon were to raise the requirement that we had put in place for gross revenue. So for, for a company which kind of gauges the size of a company of $5 million to $15 million, there are a lot more, a lot of medium-sized businesses in the community that have obviously been impacted by, you know, sustained closures and, and the pandemic in general. And we're not allowed to, or we're not able to really participate in the program. And so we thought that that was appropriate moving forward. Another kind of more major shift in the qualifications was we had the program set to help businesses that had experienced at least a 15% decline, specifically using gross revenue as a gauge of that. And we expanded those qualifications to basically anybody who, any business who had experienced, you know, a 5% decline, and they could gauge that either with gross revenues or gross profit. The rationale being a lot of our businesses in the community, specifically in the restaurant industry, have experienced a great deal of, you know, supply chain challenges that have kind of squeezed their profit margins. And so even if they're out there doing a booming business and ringing the cash register, they're not making any profit because prices have skyrocketed, but they haven't been able to, to charge customers, customers more. And then, so those are, well, those are some of the main changes that we made to the grant qualifications going forward. We've, you know, economic development's done a great job of kind of creating a objective way to vet through people who are seeking, seeking a grant award. And we've been using this calculator, which is a way to, you know, gauge kind of their impact for the local economy. And part of that calculator had to do with specifically, you know, their employee impacts and what the weight was to, you know, the greater, indirectly and directly, the Gilbert economy. So we tweaked that so that that had more of a weight in the application. And so the idea is, is even if you were in the first round of grant awards, if you didn't maximize, our ceiling for awards is $35,000, if you didn't maximize that amount, you could go back, put in this additional information, and, and see if you kind of get another bite at the apple. There's some additional slides if, if the other council members are interested in seeing them, that we can share. And, but, but we're looking at reopening it, you know, to new, new applicants, as well as the first round applicants if they didn't, you know, maximize their award amount. So I think the committee's done good work, and I think we're all comfortable with kind of how this is moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Yentes. I appreciate the subcommittee going back and taking another look at this, especially after listening to our businesses. I think that's what this is all about, and I think you've done an excellent job with that. Has anyone else on this subcommittee like to make a comment, or anyone else on the council? Councilmember Anderson?
I'll give a brief report about the Tourism Advisory Group we met last week. We have reason to be optimistic, even though that industry has probably been hit harder than anybody else through this pandemic. But we received a great report from the Arizona office of tourism, that numbers are beginning to turn a little bit. They, of course, they've taken a deep dive in occupancy rates, and the hotels, and airline industry, everything's taken a significant hit, but they're beginning to see some rise in the numbers. And we had a great presentation of, on a new hotel that will be opening in Gilbert here very soon, the Holiday Express down by the Alamo Theater down on Power Road, that will be opening soon. And even in Gilbert, the numbers that we were presented, we have reason to be optimistic that we're still, we're holding our own. We've, we've lost, just like anybody else has lost through the pandemic, lost revenue and so forth. But it looks like the numbers are gaining again. So it'll be slow, but I think we're looking at some good recovery.
That's great news, Councilmember Anderson. I realized that we don't have that Tourism Advisory Board on our liaison list. We need to get that updated. Does anyone else have any comments or updates from their committees? Seeing none, then we will go to the town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just one item tonight. I want to recognize Sergeant Jim Lotti. He is retiring today after serving the citizens of Gilbert for over 29 years with the Gilbert Police Department. Sergeant Lotti has worked numerous assignments throughout his career, but for the past three years, he has led the bike team in the Heritage District and was instrumental in helping create a safe environment down there. We want to thank him for his efforts to our community in creating one of the safest in the nation, and good luck in his retirement.
Thank you. And that's a long time to be working for our community. I appreciate his service. And any report from council on current events? Not a lot of current events going on, are there, other than teams meetings? And report from the mayor on current events. I'm glad to be here, looking forward to working with everybody, and have had a busy schedule already so far, but really love being back to work and appreciate all of you reaching out to me. I had Valerie bring you each a copy of Robert's Rules. Councilmember Yentes, yours will be here on the dais when you come back next time. It was one of the topics that came up a lot when I met with members of the council during our one-on-ones, and I thought this might be the easiest way to just, everybody have a little pocket guide to Robert's Rules. And this is a new version and new edition, and I hope you enjoy those. I want to say thank you for all of your time during those meetings with me, one-on-one. And we do have a new list of liaison assignments that now we have to already do an update to. For Councilmember Anderson, I just want to make sure that we have all of these assignments listed, so people of Gilbert know all the work that all of you are doing as a council here in our town. And meeting adjourned. Thank you.